My son's super nervous.
You're missing. She's new. I'm asking now. I didn't think. Twenty thirty. And so, yeah. I heard it was now. Then somebody here said. They can't stop you playing. It's not just so. I'm gonna get started. In my workout, if I say what they want. I work out in the legs. You're very. They have to make sure. Yeah, we're doing it, guys. Everybody's doing good. All of them. So they had it in. Charlie. Get terror numbers. She had the four. Somebody's cars. Too many cars. No, I mean, I really think about. But. Just wondering if there's. Did you have to have a sign that's colored up? Yeah. Maybe this sign isn't so clear.
You were here the last time.
I would ask her to. You're gonna be good. You behave yourself. Put your hand.
It's a morning.
She said she's gonna behave herself.
Trouble maker, right? Okay, I make two of us.
You gotta go. Do you need to like to call an order, the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission? It's Monday, August twenty second, seven P M. Could you please join me as a pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance is to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand on the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I vote for a call, please?
Edison.
Here.
Eden.
Here.
Doughty.
Here.
Money.
Present.
Swam.
Here.
Number four.
Thank you. Someone can make a motion to approve the agenda.
Shout out, I said motion.
Thank you, is there support?
No support.
Can you give a vote for a call, please?
Eden.
Yes.
Doughty.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Edison.
Yes. Thank you. This time I'd like to open the public hearing. Is someone going to make a motion? Hearing, please.
I'm going to open the public hearing for the filing of the special assessment rule for emergency medical services through Southwestern Michigan Community Ambulance Service for SMACUS, following a reading of the rules of the hearing by the mayor.
Thank you. There's support.
This is money, I support.
Thank you. Can I vote for a call, please?
Doughty.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Edison.
Yes.
Eden.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, at this time I'd like to open the public hearing for filing the special assessment rule for emergency medical services through Southwestern Michigan Community Ambulance Service. This is a public hearing designed to hear and consider any comments for, against, or otherwise to the city of Buchanan, proceeding to defray its share of the cost of maintaining and operating the Southwestern Michigan Community Ambulance Services by establishing a special assessment district pursuant to Act three sixty-eight of nineteen seventy-eight. All persons wishing to comment should be given the opportunity to do so. The person addressing the commission shall stand, state their name, and direct their comments directly to the commission. In the event a large number of people wish to comment, the mayor may announce that each person speaking shall limit their comments to three minutes. Each person, I'm sorry, each person should have an opportunity to speak before anyone else is allowed to speak outside your time. The mayor may, at their discretion, terminate comments which are unreasonably lengthy or unrelated to the subject of the public hearing. When the mayor observes that there are no further public comments, he or she shall close that portion of the hearing. So at this time, if there's anyone who'd like to speak in favor, on the special assessment.
Yes, would you give us a definition of special assessments?
Sure, we can do that.
For the people here?
Sure.
So a special assessment is different from a tax, but for all intents and purposes, it acts similarly. It's a mechanism by which, typically by parcel, which is the instance here, funds are collected for a designated purpose. In this instance, the designated purpose is to pay for ambulance services provided by SMACUS, which stands for the Southwestern Michigan Community Ambulance Service. So it's proposing that a district be drawn, and the district in this case includes the city of Buchanan entirely, and that each individual that owns property will be assessed a fee per parcel that varies and increases year by year under the term of the proposal.
Thank you. So anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you'd like to make your way to the podium and state your name for the minutes?
I'd like to speak, not necessarily in favor.
Okay, well, at this time, though, I'm gonna take people who wanna speak in favor first, okay? And then we'll. Did we, did we receive any emails or firm letters?
I received one, but it was not for a favor.
Okay.
Well, if you own two properties, but one of them is a vacant lot, the other one you live on.
Okay, I see.
Is that gonna be for both properties?
It would be for both, actually, yes.
It'd be the same price for both properties?
It would be, yes.
Oh, it doesn't seem right. It seems like it should be just for the property you live on.
I'm not, I don't make the rules, I'm just, yeah, that's, that's the way it is. It would be twenty-five dollars for each parcel.
And then it'll raise up every year?
Five dollars for the next five years is what they're asking for.
Right, it doesn't seem right.
So if there's no one wishing to speak in favor, if there's anyone who wishes to speak against, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes, and we'll get you a record.
I just wish to speak. Well, I'm Don Ryan, I'm at three thirteen West Front Street. I'm, I'm very uneasy about this proposal to increase by a two and a half the special assessment for SMACUS. But I have, I have not seen any financial statements or anything about SMACUS operation in conjunction with this or any, any proposals. I, you know, showing how much money they're spending for, for personnel and equipment and for maintenance of their offices. And, and it seems that we ought to know about all of those. And we ought to see what justified a two and a half time increase. And so, that's, I'm, I'm, as I said, I'm, I'm, I, I, I have a, uh, I would like to know more about it.
Anyone, anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, my name is Jacob Blossom here, one oh seven West Dewey Street. Uh, I have some concerns, follow Mr. Ryan. Do we currently pay an assessment of twenty dollars? Is this gonna be an additional twenty-five dollars?
No.
So you're just taking the twenty-dollar assessment and you're adding five bucks?
Every.
Um, my other question is, didn't we just pass a millage in the last election to fund SMACUS?
That was dialeride.
That was dialeride? Oh, okay.
We currently have a special assessment district.
Uh, so I'm, I'm a little, uh, against this proposal of raising it five dollars a month, especially per parcel. Um, it is a tax. Uh, I think the people should be able to vote on that as well. Uh, so maybe we should get it on the ballot for no effort.
Larry, do you wanna share the impact of doing a millage proposal versus special assessment in terms of cost?
Sure, so there are expenses that are tied to the cost of creating a ballot proposal and that will follow upon those city taxpayers to sort of subsidize that cost. That doesn't mean it's not doable, we can do that. But ultimately, if it comes in the form of an additional millage, that, that is an alternative option, but it's a different way of taking the funds. Uh, the reason a special assessment, to my understanding, was the mechanism that was chosen by SMACUS is because they were attempting to get as close as possible using the tools available to them to have it charged per individual person, as opposed to a millage which will be based on the assessed value of your home. So it's oftentimes a less accurate division when you're trying to get per person. Unfortunately, there's no mechanism by which the state of Michigan has given municipal entities such as townships and cities the authority to tax based singly, singularly on the individual person. But assessment based on parcel is the closest mechanism we have to achieving that goal. That's why it was chosen. Um, it's, it's up for the public and the commission to decide that's the best mechanism, but it's my understanding of the difference and why it was chosen.
Okay, I have a question also. Currently, uh, we pay twenty bucks. How long has that been in effect? And do, when we go back five years with the max payout, is that going back to twenty or is it gonna stay at the max payout?
And I apologize, maybe I didn't understand your question, you talked about the max payout. You want to explain that?
Okay, so we're, we're going up every five, five dollars every year for five years. So after the five years are over, do we go back to the twenty or do we stay at the five-year?
You would have to go through another process similar to this to make that decision.
Oh, so we could go up again?
And, and that would be possible, it would all depend at the time.
Brian, Brian, when was the last time it was raised?
The per parcel amount was raised twenty-five years ago.
Thank you, that's all I needed, that's all I needed. All I'm saying is to say, let's put this into context, right? We can sit here and argue all night long about pennies and dollars. Bottom line is to say, everyone in this room, at some point, unfortunately, their family's gonna touch an ambulance service. And if we're gonna sit here and bicker about five dollars after a twenty-five-year stalemate on raises, regardless if it was by your decision or municipalities that are bought into this decision, I'm sorry, but I live in this municipality too. I'm willing to pay an extra five dollars a year to make sure that this gentleman and all his service members get paid appropriately and show up when I need him. I'm sorry, you guys can sit here and argue about this in opposition all night long. I'm not gonna sit here and tolerate it to a point that we have to discuss five dollars a year. I have to pay it too.
So you had a, back to your millage question a little bit too. My understanding is the amount you're paying now is drastically less than what would be required for it to be a millage proposal.
That was, that was a question I had. I mean, this information was not extremely clear.
Transparent, right?
Yep, and that, I like a little transparency because, you know, every year we're going up in taxes, where does it stop? And, you know, could we, could the city fund this in a different way? I haven't looked at the budget. I mean, is there a possibility that we eliminate a park and we fund SMACUS? I mean, is there other options? I mean, that wasn't clearly laid out as well. And that's, I'm just looking for options. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to make a comment?
I, you want me to respond to him?
No, thank you, Don.
Let's let him speak, come in.
Good evening, Commissioners and Fellows, citizens, my name is Dale Turner, under the eight oh one hundred and quarter. I just wanted to say that I did use Brian's services last week, thank you, you did a great job. My only question is, can some of the marijuana might be used to fund the SMACUS situation here? I, I don't know how, you know, what you can do, but, um, just a thought. But I, I understand, and I agree with Mark, you know, it's, it's a needed service. They did an outstanding job with me last week, so, Brian, thank you very much. So, that's my question.
Well, the, the budget was completed, um, this year's budget was completed before we learned about, um, what SMACUS is asking for. So, to work retroactively, to change the budget is difficult, to say the least. But that's not saying we couldn't look at doing something going forward. Um, but in the meantime, we need to work with the budget that we have and try to figure out now what to do with, um, what we're being asked of SMACUS. So is there anyone else wishing to make a comment? Would you make your way to the podium, please, if you would, please?
Well, I was wondering about this being raised every year for the next five years. What about the people that are on fixed incomes? Where, they can't always afford that. And if they own more than one property, but yet they only live on one of them, why should they have to pay more for the property that they don't live on?
I, I, I'm not disagreeing, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm listening to you and I hear what you're saying.
Okay, that, that's what I had to say. I said what I had to say.
I think if we can, what I'd like to do is get, is hear from, from the people in the audience, and then we're going to discuss it up here also. But, and we'll try and answer all the questions that come up if we can. Thank you. Can we get your name just for the, for the record, please?
Your name and address. Your name and address. I'll enter.
My name's Jeanie Garrison, three twenty last street. Now, a question, um, some of my seniors are concerned, and I guess I don't fully understand either, but the city's funding of SMACUS, is it just for operating expenditures? Is that what it is? Just to keep them operating and their service in Buchanan?
It is.
Because seniors are asking, if I have Medicare and other insurance, why do I need to be assessed to help SMACUS something? So it was just for operating expenses, that's what the assessment is for?
Yeah, so the, the way it's being explained to us is that, uh, previous to Brian's, and, and this is in Brian's defense, and I don't know Brian any better than, I know him, I know you better than I know him, so, let's just say that my understanding is that they've spent an extensive amount of time trying to understand why it is after twenty-five years they didn't ask for additional funds to meet the standard where they're trying to meet our expectations. And so if you go to other municipalities and they have, if you have Edwardsburg, and you have Marion Springs and Three Oaks, all right, and they all have ambulance services, they're trying to meet the same expectations that those municipalities are offering, right? And then at the same time, there are individuals who are working there who love SMACUS, been there for years, I think you have a pretty senior crew. It's very difficult for them to stay when these other municipalities and ambulance services who are being supplemented either through grant processes or through the city themselves or municipalities. They're in difficulty keeping their staff. And so, after twenty-five years, they're finally saying, look, we have to raise financial window for us to operate in your area. To me, the same, uh, financial stability as these other municipalities and ambulance services. And I don't think that they've done that. And, and I, I would imagine that he would be willing to, to allude to that even further into SMACUS's services. But I just don't think we've been keeping pace, not only with SMACUS, but in the city, we've seen the same problem, is that previous administrations didn't make minute changes over time, and now a lot of this is falling on our current administration, current, um, boards and commissions. And unfortunately, that's, it's, it's a cost that we have to embody because regardless, somebody's gonna come in, if it's not SMACUS, somebody's gonna come in and say, it's thirty dollars a year for per parcel to have our ambulance service. And we think, okay, well, we could've had it for twenty, then twenty-five, and then thirty. Now it's fifty because that's the standard that these other municipalities have already set, and these ambulance services, their, their services could be fifty dollars per year per parcel. Now it'll be fifty. Is anybody in here not gonna pay fifty? I'm gonna pay fifty. If it's not SMACUS, somebody else is gonna come in and do it. And it might be fifty, I'm not, this is with Ms. Harris, this isn't for you, I'm sorry, this isn't just for you, this is for in general, like, this is what we're up against. We're up against.
This is the understanding that people need.
Right.
People know why.
So to answer your part of your question though, is so this special assessment pays for us to have ambulance service. Now, when you use the ambulance service, your insurance will, I mean, there's still another charge for, for using the service when they come to your home. Uh, this is just to allow us to have ambulance service in the city of Buchanan.
That's a lot of people just didn't understand.
Right.
Yeah, it wasn't clear, was it? And that, and I think that's something that we can take back and as we move forward, is that can be explained, right? This is kind of my, is, is we pass along for every municipality who's dealing with this, and we're in a big group, this is a big group of people, an odd of people, I mean, thousands of people.
They would understand why they would ask that question.
Yeah, and the good thing is is that these.
I haven't clarity, you know, and it never came up until now because some properties have been assessed.
Correct, and that's one thing that, where we've talked about this, what, three meetings now? So, six weeks we've talked about this because we were also very difficult and, and, and asked very pointed questions to SMACUS as to why. And their communication to the communities needs to be more steadfast and concrete as to why we're doing this. And I believe after you've been beat up by sixteen different, you know, municipalities, it seems that they're going to deliver, so.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to make a comment?
Thank you.
Uh, yes, my name is Madrona May, and I'm on one eighteen Sherman Parkway. I was actually wanting to say something kind of positive. As someone who worked with seniors for many years, who continues to work with them, um, I know some of you may think that this is too much money, but I can't tell you how many of you use it because many of times I've called nine-one-one for our seniors. And it's great to know that there's someone there taking care of them. Um, I know that I am going to be calling one soon because of my mother, um, and it's great to know that they're, and I have to say that SMACUS, working with them directly and with the police department, they are great with our seniors, they are so good with them. There was one incident, when I did like something and spoke up, that person no longer works at SMACUS. So they do take our seniors and everyone else extremely seriously. Another thing I would like you to consider as a group, you know, we've had two years of COVID, and while we were isolating in our homes, they were running around like crazy and they burned themselves out. So now many of them are not here working with us anymore. And they don't get that big of a salary. Trust me, anybody who works with seniors does not get a big salary. So the least we can do is say to ourselves, do we want this service or do we not want it? Because, believe me, when you don't have it, you're gonna need it. So consider that when you're thinking about the five dollars. I know that we're all in, um, I myself work on an income that's extremely low, but at the same time, I think my five dollars is broken. Uh, that just means maybe I won't have a cup of coffee at the restaurant next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a clarification question?
Sure.
It's, the rate, it would be five dollars annually?
It's, so they're proposing a five-dollar increase every year for the next five years. It would take it from twenty-five dollars per parcel to fifty dollars per parcel in five years.
That, that's it?
That's it. Anyone else wishing to make a comment? Yes.
My name is, my name is Farin Green, I don't live in Buchanan, but I have a few questions. Well, for one, um, I'd like to clarify that, yes, they did not raise the price of parcels, but they, five years ago, they got an increase of number of parcels. So they did get increased five years ago. And I would like to know what measures SMACUS is doing to save money? What things, what are they doing to? They don't tell us anything. I mean, we don't know how they spend our money, and it is our money, all of us. And I think we have a right to know how our money is being saved. I'd like to know what cost-cutting measures they are doing.
Okay.
Do you have any?
Well, let's, when, let, let's get all of our comments underway, and then we can ask Brian to come up, and we can, we can grill off again for the third time. Is there anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Jim from three oh two Lake Street, two questions. Uh, uh, SMACUS serves more than Buchanan, right? Are these other communities raising money?
Yeah, all right, so.
And do we have it broken down, or do we know how much they, they?
We do, and I, and I, and I'm happy to share that information with you.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to make a comment?
My name is Grace Bantler, and, um, I do have a question for SMACUS. When you go out, do you get reimbursed? When you go out to pick up someone, do you get reimbursed?
We get, we do receive a, a payment for that.
You, you do receive a payment? Okay, so, uh, you receive payments for what you do. And, so, when we worked, we received payment for what we did. So you actually are getting paid?
Yes.
So, I don't get it then, why we as taxpayers should have to pay thirty dollars every year when I was picked up by the ambulance, my insurance company paid for it?
And, and I can try and explain that.
Still, what is the purpose? Is this just to keep them here?
It is, absolutely.
Because.
A lot of what we're paying for with this money is, is them sitting idle, waiting to go on a call. If, if you're asking them if they get paid every time they go to someone's house, insurance files when they go to someone's house? But no one's paying them to sit in the, in their, in their building waiting for a call. So in order to pay those people who drive the ambulance and who are, who, who are on the staff in the ambulance, they need to be paid while they're waiting for a call, and that's what this covers. Am I correct, Brian?
Both, yes.
Well.
The cost of ready.
I don't recall ever being able to do anything. I don't recall ever being able to do anything.
Maybe you should join the audience. Well, and we'll, we'll try and answer all those questions. Anyone else wish to make a comment?
If, if we're going to have SMAC's come up anyway, uh, could I ask a question for them before he comes up?
Sure.
Should I reserve that till later or?
No, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Jacob Losinger, 107 West Dewey Street. Uh, is it possible to, uh, is the price of pickup service dictated by Medicare? And if so, is it, could you adjust the price of pickup to cover the cost of idle time?
That's an excellent question.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to make a comment or ask a question?
I'm not here for that. Of course, you're not paying them to do nothing.
If you would, Mr. Eibach, if you would.
It's John Van Dyke. Of course, you're not paying them to do nothing anymore than you're paying unembedded soldier who's not getting shot at to.
That's not a very good.
That's a, that's an incredibly appropriate example, just, just as surely as you're paying for a school building or a road that you don't use. It's part of the social contract. I, you know, I, I, I gotta be honest, I'm gobsmacked. You're, you're, how much? $30? $5 a year, right?
Right.
For the next five years?
This $5 increase for the next five years.
$25 total?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a comment? Do you want to read the email or the letter that you received?
Um, this is from Kim Boyer. They own a vacant property at 120 Southern North River Trail. In reviewing the notice of public hearing, I would like to request that this property not be assessed for the purpose of operating SMAC. The request is based on these facts. There's currently no structure and no public or private activities. Thank you for your attention regarding the special assessment.
Thank you. One last time, anyone have any other comments? They're like, right. Okay, so now I'm going to close the public hearing for filing a special assessment role for emergency medical services through Southwestern Michigan Community Ambulance Service. Would someone like to make a motion to close?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swann?
Yes.
Dennisson?
Yes.
Reeden?
Yes.
Dowey?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And I promise we're going to answer all the questions that came up when we get to it on the agenda, so. Please just be patient. All right, so at this time, um, public comment on agenda items only. If anyone would like to make a, a public comment, um, concerning something on the agenda, if you would please make your way to the podium.
Hi, it's me again. I probably shouldn't have spoken about this to my colleagues. Good to see you. Um, my name is John Van Dyke, or nobody, Dave. I've been living here for about 20 years ago, and three years ago, I got us into the national news. For those of you that don't know, we're the nicest place in America. I wrote that. Um, I'm going to ask you to just watch your video real quick, and then I'm going to tell you my idea. I'll be all right.
Yep, I think we're ready.
You got the sound?
Midwest North from all you need. Big small town, big heartbeat. Chicago comes for antique shops. First day basis with our cops. We march to feed a parade parade of glory day. Twenty years by close the factory. New song on Jingle Street. Thought no one would know who gone down to Mexico. Lost jobs at the mill that flee. We skip the mill. I see those lights in Buchanan tonight. Like the lights on my tree. Miss my friends and my family alright. You can't come on home to me. Round here we all run for it. No use for quarters. Give me a little bit of it. The ship in the car making mistake. No use for ports near back of the truck. Split up here. If you shut down as did Cart, plan a red lines playing part. But our bed so fried home, little bit turned out a lot of soul. Bury our kids upon the hill where the politicians never will. I see those lights in Buchanan tonight. Like the lights on my tree. Miss my friends and my family alright. You can't come on home to me. Black gang get away north. Thank God we all come for it. Yes, we're in a great, late flowers, bad man's dream. It don't matter if you like or white, or black or silver. You're a sign. I see those lights in Buchanan tonight. Like the lights on my tree. Miss my friends and my family alright. You can't come on home to me. Christmas time can't do no wrong. Need the coven sing along. I saw them got pause. They dress up like Santa Claus. Sign to Christmas song with a place for kids. The nicest place. I see those lights in Buchanan tonight. Like the lights on my tree. Miss my friends and my family alright. You can't come on home to me. I put some clips in here while I show.
All right, um, so because everybody shut down that year, I composed and recorded an album featuring a song up Buchanan that you just heard. I paid the album recording motion and musicians. Uh, we played, we premiered the album last fall at Tin Shop Theater. Those were the reviews that you saw. Since then, our group, and we, we play about 75 times a year, has put that, that song and the story about Buchanan and what happened, um, here. But here's the, I can, we want to take it for, my idea is for 2023, for the summer, we'd like to go further out and play, play it more. But I can't, I can't afford to keep going. So I'm asking the city to partner with me. I have a list of things. Want to get that real quick? Oh, just, now you say play, that's okay.
Okay, ask the board?
No, it's okay. I mean, I think we've seen enough of the app. Okay, anyway, that's it. Um, I did some math. I can keep it going for, uh, two months. I'll keep it going through June and July for about $3,500. I wrote it all out here on this one. That's about it. And, um, thanks. You want?
Do you have something to add?
Oh, okay.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment on agenda items only? Okay, so now let's move to the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
This is money. I'd move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Go, go, please.
Clement?
Yes.
Dennisson?
Yes.
Reeden?
Yes.
Dowey?
Yes.
Bun?
Yes.
Harris?
Thank you. Okay, moving down to item, uh, 10, schedule matters from the floor. The first item, uh, school resource officer proposal. The school is actually considering other funding sources and has asked to table that, so it's a move up. A motion to table that at this time.
Um, I'm going to, I'm going to table the school resource officer proposal.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Dennisson?
Yes.
Reeden?
Yes.
Dowey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swann?
Yes.
Table.
Thank you. Okay, now, excuse me. Moving on to Consider Resolution Number 2022.08 slash Fortune 90, Confirmation of a Special Assessment Role for Special Assessment District for Emergency Medical Services through Southwestern Michigan Community Ambulance Service. So a, as promised, let me, um, let me read you some numbers. Well, two, your two questions were about, uh, who else is participating and are they going to pay the increase that was asked of them? And so let me read down through this list. The City of Niles is proceeding with the increase as requested. Howard Township is proceeding with the increase as requested. Niles Township has indicated that they're going with a two-year special assessment with a $5 increase. They stated that they will pay any outstanding balance from township funds. Bertrand Township has indicated that they're proceeding forward with a one-year special assessment with no increase. They did not indicate how they will pay the remaining portion. Buchanan Township has not indicated which direction they are going. So that tells you what the other communities did. Um, and then looking at the other municipalities and the amount they pay, um, I'll start with the City of Buchanan. This says we currently pay 9%, which is a $70,689 contribution. In contrast, the City of Niles pays $198,529. Niles Township pays $238,000. Howard Township pays $103,000. Buchanan Township pays $56,000. Bertrand Township pays $43,000. Ho-Kagan Township pays $8,000. And Milton Township pays $51,000. Brian, I, I guess if, if you could make your way to the podium, we'll ask you a couple of questions. If you wanted to respond to some of the questions that were asked during the hearing.
Yeah. Do you want me to go first or?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Well, first off, uh, one of the things I've heard consistently from all the communities is that they would like more transparency in operations. So the way SMAC is, uh, structured is I'm, I'm the director and I report to a board of directors, which is made up of the communities. And every month, we provide full financial report to our communities through that board. Over the last two and a half years, I think you mentioned this pandemic, it was crazy. We were busy. And I think when you're in that, in the fray of that, you just assume everybody else knows what you're going through. And, uh, and so when we came out of that and realized that we needed to move towards an increase to protect our communities, I don't think we were really fully prepared to understand how little our communities really understood about our operations. So we've heard that clearly. We've taken that to heart. This week, or I'm sorry, just last week, uh, the board approved initiative where we're going to be doing a full revamp of our, our website and, uh, putting a lot more information on that site, making it more accessible to the public so they can go up there. We realize not everybody uses the internet, so we've also engaged the services of a firm to help us, uh, develop those messages and give that information to folks from other meetings as well. So we've heard the message about needing better trans, uh, transparency. Uh, we would love for our communities to see how we spend their money and what we're doing, uh, there. We take the job very seriously, and so, uh, we're excited about opportunities to do that. Another great question that was asked was, why don't we just raise our rates? Uh, that's, that's a good question. And, uh, if it was that simple, I would, that would be great. The, the challenge is that, uh, insurance payers, particularly Medicare and Medicaid, have what they give us at a certain amount. And it doesn't matter what we build in. They have what they call Medicare allowable and Medicare pays that amount. Medicaid, Medicaid pays their amount. The insured, uh, the, like Blue Cross, Blue Shield, those places, uh, they have the opportunity to participate with them. If you don't participate, you can build them a full amount. They'll still pay you whatever they want. But, uh, it's much more difficult to get that done because then you're considered out of the network for them. If you do participate, you get your money faster, but you're going to get that cap. So there's no real way for us to increase rates and collect money. I, uh, we did just do a, a rate change, but we'll see very little of that money. It really won't affect our income. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that did, that, my dad.
Yeah. And that's one of our challenges, is that we don't have a way to increase revenues, other than more ambulance calls and we don't want to go out in itinerary business that way, so.
So i- is $25 really enough? I mean, I don't want to see us lose the service, but is there a way that we can set this up and, you know, create a budget and say, this is how much it's going to cost? I mean, you guys are trying to underpay from what I understand to start with.
So in that statement alone, you can understand how insignificant $5 is, right? So in and of that statement, you can understand the complexity of only adding for $5 when my statement earlier was, if I come to you and says it's 50, you say, what's my offer? And I go, it's 50.
And, and I, and I change your point 100%. When it's $5, when, when is there enough $5?
Okay, I, I don't want to have, have to back and forth if we could avoid it.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Do you have, do you ask for some questions?
Yeah, good point. So from the financial standpoint, Brian, over the last two weeks, has been getting drilled by my emails of questions going through their audit and their last two years of financial statements. And I appreciate your responses. They're very quick and detailed, so thank you. Quick and easy is there, they operate as an operating loss. That's how their company functions. Right now, the special assessment offsets that operating loss, and there's a little additional funding there that they utilize. Your financial statements are going to drill down to the very, depending on how the, the specific extra dollars were used, right? That's what the board is for, you know, and we have a representative on that board who's supposed to be operating in our best interest. We believe that's happening. Um, as Brian indicated, I think their board's taking a different position on paying attention to things or approaching things differently based on how this assessment questionnaire has gone out. Two questions I still had were, one, one item in the operating, or in the audit was it operates as an enterprise fund still. So I'm just comparing that to how I understand the water sewer fund. So I wasn't understanding exactly how applicable that was on ambulance service, so maybe you could help me out with that, since you're not giving a full billing based on what you just described. It just called it an enterprise fund. I didn't understand why it was enterprise fund. Not too crazy of a question. And then, have we- And then, have we had an answer back from the attorneys on the population-based billing yet?
They, they did distribute a document showing what contribution would be based on population. I believe that the communities need to come back together to continue that conversation because I don't think it actually will.
Okay, yeah, so that's the document that we, okay, I understand that. I don't have any other questions. I mean, I've sent this guy a million questions. The, my biggest concern is you have the union negotiation coming up, right? And how this impacts the union negotiation next year. I absolutely think it's a service we have to fund. We have, I like the term social contract. I thought that was a good way to put it. Do we need to pay better attention and understand how SMAC operates better as municipal that we're going to be going to the public? Yeah. Next time, we gotta figure out a way to do that better. It is surprising to me that, I mean, it's like Niles Township and Bertrand Township didn't approve it as presented. So that has me questioning how we will approve it. Is it going to be as presented? Or do we do a variation of something like that and come back to the table after you've had the opportunity to go down that transparency initiative that you discussed earlier? Those are where my head, that's where my head's at at the moment.
Does anybody have any questions for Brian? Comments that you'd like to make? I'd like to just start by saying, there's a difference between being transparent and being dishonest. You know, I think we, I mean, we get told all the time that we're not transparent, but I, I don't think people understand. We really are. You can walk in here and ask for anything, and you could have anything. So we're being transparent. But our job is not to inform you of what's going on. That's your civic responsibility, is to pay attention and to know what's going on. So, um, to say that they're not being transparent because they're not broadcasting what's happening, I think that's unfair. I'll throw that. But hopefully you can understand the difficult position we're in. We want to be able to provide an ambulance service for the community. And truly, we've all been watching the news, and we've all been going to the grocery store, and we realize that things are going up. And a lot of us are playing catch-up at this point, trying to get to where we should be compared to where we are. And this is just another example of, um, SMAC's employees are underpaid. They're, they don't even come close to the rest of the county. And, and this is an attempt by them to be able to pay their people more and keep their people. If we don't have anybody to operate the ambulance, we're in serious trouble. So we have to try and figure out a way to fund this. Now, you can say, we don't want to do the special assessment. What else can we do? We don't just have magic money either. It's all of our money. So we have to either, we're going to use your money to pay for this one way or the other. So we can either raise taxes, or we can ask you to do it through the special assessment. And, and I understand what you're saying about why should I be charged when I only live on one of the properties? Is it perfect? No, but it's, it's the fairest way they could figure out how to chart, make sure everyone was paying their fair share. And, um, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know how else to get a, a more fair billing in order to support SMACs and.
So one other question I forgot to write down. So the, in Bertrand Township's case, right, or Niles Township's case, they're saying they're going to make up the difference of the assessment versus.
Right.
How, how does that work? So, I imagine like right now, right? You're, you have an operating loss right now, the subsidy from a certain assessment is outpacing that loss. But if that, is that only if the loss is greater than the revenues that we have to come in and correct it? Or does it come out of reserves? Like, when does that come into play where we have to write a check for the difference? And then, secondary question to that is, I imagine it's the board, but are they making sure that you're staying within the budget to minimize an operating loss in that situation?
Yes. So, uh, to answer your first question, I, I think this is uncharted waters, so we don't know how that will work out. I would imagine it will be based on the contribution amount that would be expected of that community based on previous practice. But I don't know. I'm not, I'm not an attorney. You know, you have a bunch of brighter people than me figuring that piece of it out. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know. What was the second part of the question?
Just basically, just mainly that, if you come to a, the board is making sure your, not, your deficit's within control, I guess is the point.
Yes, yes.
Because right now, it's maintained because of the set.
Right. So, the, the board, every month, every dime we spend, if they have questions about any expenditure that can occur, they can challenge that at the board. We can manage this. We also provide them with a few privacy and our statements of financial activity to see where I'm studying in each category based on the budgets. And in addition to that, our financial position at the end of every month. And then, uh, this year, we normally do this in October, uh, we are audited, uh, before we state initiative by it. This, right now, we're being audited by a company called Sigri Credit. And they come in and they also make sure, one, they're following accurate auditing or accounting processes. Uh, and also they look for fraud and all of those things as well, so.
Very good firm.
Yeah.
So, um, union negotiations are yearly?
This last contract is three years.
Three years?
Three years. Uh, it officially ends in May, but we're looking to open negotiations early and get going because we're way behind on wages and we need to do something to keep people there, so.
So when are you going to do this?
Uh, we're, we're talking about next week, the week after.
Okay, so here's my thought. If we approve this five dollars a year and then the union comes in there and you guys agree to bump wages up because you guys are underpaid, next year, you're going to have to come back and say, I know we just did this last year, but that five dollars is not going to be enough. Maybe we do like a year at thirty-five dollars or thirty dollars and then wait for next year to redo this. And I think the amounts may have to be adjusted up.
It's, that's the stuff that keeps me up at night is that they're not asking for that enough.
Okay, twelve dollars starting pay, right? Twelve dollars starting pay?
Twelve, it's changed.
And what's the, what's the standard in the, within, stop within very accounting?
Uh, we're fifteen percent below Medic One. We're about forty percent below EVOs. We're about thirty-three percent below, uh, healthcare trade agencies in the city.
Perfect. So I'm no mathematician, but I would imagine there's enough smart people in this room. Mr. Robinson would be one of them. Right? They can, you can just run the numbers real quick, and I can guarantee you, come back to this table a year from now, even that number's not going to be high enough. And all the, and, and to your point, yeah, we're going to be back here again if we do a year, if we do two. But the number's going to be higher. And it's going to be higher not just because it's SMACs and we appreciate all your patience and all this time and all your municipalities. Somebody else will be standing here, and you're going to, you're going to, you're going to wish that you just went with this deal. And I'm saying it's the only deal, but if we continue to prolong this, it's going to get worse.
But I think, I think Mr. Downey makes a really good point, though. Like, it really, it really is a good chance that, um, what you're asking for is not going to be enough.
That's.
Is that a fair statement?
Good. There's that possibility, yeah. Because what we're asking for is enough to bring us up to where everybody else is. We're going to, the state itself is moving into a competitive state, or other agencies, we come into the realization we need to go back up, in which case we're back where we started from. So, there's a possibility that the wages become competitive enough that we'll turn everybody down with enough.
So, this is kind of a left field service, just hit me. So a lot of other counties operate under a county-wide millage model. Was there any reality to that happening in Marion County with the three separate services that are there and becoming under the county's purview?
You know, we've, uh, I actually had a conversation with the director at Medic One the other day about that being a future thing that we do. I, I, I think it is a possibility to go county-wide. Definitely be easier for all of us, probably.
So, continuing to have my thought. If we approve this five years right now, and then next year you come in and say it wasn't enough because of the wages went up, then the community is going to be a little upset because we just signed this a year ago, right?
Could, I guess you could, yeah, two ways. It could be, I guess if we had to increase it, otherwise they're locked into pricing, I guess, for sure. But, yeah, I wouldn't be happy if my ambulance service couldn't operate at a standard based on, or the standard we need them to based on the funding they're getting because the negotiations went above and beyond what the projected budgets were. Well, there's also a potential that because the other municipalities decided not to go with longer term, there also, there's an opportunity that they could have a different ambulance service as well. We have to be cognizant of the fact that just because they're not on lockstep, that you're still beholden to these municipalities and the amount of money that they spend to keep you operating, regardless of that you are not, I can't stress this enough, it's going to be somebody, and it may not be his rates, and his rates may be too low, and he could come back again and ask us for more, but it's still going to be somebody who's asking for this money to operate an ambulance service. And so we may see in the next two years, these municipalities who chose not to go with the increase, they're going to have the potential to double their opportunity to keep SMACs or triple if somebody else comes in and says, this is the service I'm going to operate, and this is the rate I can operate at. It really goes beyond question. This is, it seems so simplistic to me that we're dealing with a situation, and he's probably underbuided, and, but we're also paying a fair price or something that we've traditionally got for twenty-five years. We've never paid him a fiscal increase, and we still receive the same service.
I think it's, I hear you saying, and I think it's important to remember that there's no evil doing here. And they're just trying to run a program. They're trying to figure out how to fund it. And, um, they're in the same boat as everybody else. I mean, none of us are swimming in money. And, and I think the prudent thing for us to do is, is to, considering what Commissioner Downey has said, I, I think it's, would be wise of us to, to do this on the short term and revisit it again next year after, after you've had union negotiations, after these other municipalities have figured out what they want to do. You know, after your transparency initiatives. So that would be, I guess that would be my suggestion, is that we, you know, that we approve one of the small increases to thirty dollars and then, and then revisit it next year. That doesn't mean we don't trust you. That doesn't mean we don't like what you're doing. It means we're, we're trying to look out for our community, and we're trying to look out for you, too.
Sure. I guess that would get you the money that you need right away, the same exact amount you're asking for, right? I'd be.
But then, but then we, then we can also say we're holding you accountable, though. We want to look at your financials next year, see how you did. And, um, and hopefully you don't come back and say, you haven't need seventy dollars now. So, does anybody else have any other comments or ideas?
I think, I think all of this, you know, it, it's, it's a good idea. I think the revisiting of this next year is a great idea. For the simple reason is, we all know the good that you do, but we all remember the bad that's happened. And that's got a lot to do with it, you know? And, uh, and I think for this community, and speaking, you know, I guess I'm speaking for myself, I may even, uh, revisiting this, seeing your transparency and what SMAC is doing, I think would be one of the best, uh, best bets and the bank for our buck, uh, you know, coming out of Buchanan. I know that's not really what you've been looking for, but, you know, we do need this ambulance service. Like I said, everybody in this room at one point or time is going to be affected by it. And, uh, I did, I just think that, you know, you putting it all together again next year, coming back and, and doing it again, confirm this thirty bucks, whatever, and then.
I think you'd get a lot of opportunity to, to, we've heard the, I don't have a structure on that parcel comment a lot, right? Is there a way to shore that up and commentary related to population-based pricing, if that makes sense in the long term? So I personally'd like to get you the money that you're asking for in the next fiscal year, like you have proposed to us, thirty dollars. I think that's a very fair ask.
So, just, I mean, the reason we go with the five-year is for the convenience of the community not having to go back and do it every year, but maybe this isn't a year to not.
I mean, I think in a perfect world, you would have already had your union negotiations, and we would have kind of known where things were heading. That probably would have been helpful for you, too, but, um, I think it's a legitimate concern is that you have those coming up after we're, after we're deciding. And I, I just, I, you know, I think doing this on a short term, um, just makes the most sense for the community right now. And I think it's, um, well, I don't know, I don't know if you guys, there's someone who'd like to make a motion? No?
So I'll move, I gotta think of how to motion this right away. I'll move to approve special assessment role for the Special Assessment District for emergency medical services through southwestern Michigan Community Ambulance Service for one year at thirty dollars per parcel.
Which is a five-dollar increase?
Ten-dollar increase.
It's a ten-dollar increase.
It's a total.
It's a twenty, I think.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's an additional five per year. Right.
Is there support?
No support.
Can I roll call, please?
Mr. Downey, if I may, I wanted to hopefully clarify a point so that if it comes up, do you know the answer to it? If it's only a one year at this point, rather than the full, um, next year when it comes back around again, I know this year SMAC has paid for the publication costs and notices to individuals who reside in our community. Would that be the case next year? Or would the city of Buchanan be able to cost this? My understanding, that's approximately a ten-thousand-dollar expense.
That is a decision that the board makes. That's not a spending decision I can make, so we would have to take that back to the board as a general speaking, may, um, have any support for that, uh, in this particular sphere.
Any questions? Motion support?
Weeden?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Bun?
Yes.
Dennisson?
Yes. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
We're going to move on to item eleven, reports by departments, committees, and boards.
Oh, um, Tim, did you want to do the public safety report or hardy?
Hardy. On your crossing guard, look. Just real quick. So, um, this is just our annual agreement that we have, and school board will do the same thing. Make sure they have crossing guards because of students that do walk, and make sure they cross safely. So it's just, uh, our annual agreement that we have. Pretty routine.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Uh, this is money I'd moved to approve the crossing guard agreement and the crossing guard hourly wage agreement as presented.
Is there support? Downey supports. Can I roll call, please?
Dennisson?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Light?
Yes.
Bun.
We're always looking for crossing guards, so contact the police department.
So, uh, so before we leave, are we going to, so if someone does want to sign up to be a crossing guard, where should they go and what should they do?
They should contact the police department and talk to Diana. They will, will usually have it as, we have to do an application, we have to do a background check. And then if that's good, then we have to do, from our crossing guards, that's my four hours of training. So we usually have additionally a video that they have to watch, and then we begin the training every year.
Is that paid for?
Yes, they do get paid.
So you start, do you offer like white gloves and horns? Like, is it becomes a more enter paid position?
We, we give you a nice.
Do you entertain?
Yes, we give you nice, uh, crossing vests, traffic vests, and a nice stop sign. The gloves, uh, we haven't thought about that because.
And the whistles and.
Uh.
That's a crossing guard opportunity.
Do you wanna take a chance to stand out there in the middle of the street holding the sign?
I mean, I just order the kids, it depends on what kind of kid.
I think it was the white gloves, white gloves. We want to cross them, so.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Harvey.
Uh, moving on to unfinished business, we have none. So going to item thirteen, there's new business, um, closed session, is there a motion?
So I'll move down to your closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two six eight, section eight one D and H, to discuss matters subject to attorney-client privilege and the potential lease or purchase of real property.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Gary's on fire.
Weeden? Downey?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Slim?
Yes.
Donaldson?
Yes.
Eric Cole?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you as much as we can. Crossing guard paid a fourth to the hospital with five dollars.
I believe you're over. Twenty's climate.
Be quite cautious.
We saw, uh, used to have.
Yes.
The reason I know that is because I was a freshman in NT, like the spring. Was the director, like, yes. You still fight me now. So, you need to tell somebody off, like, just agree.
So, and when I went past your building, I was like, I went that way, I was like, I'm gonna get him somewhere. My wife said, geez. Yeah. Police, when I was on the fire service, you were gonna, you know, combine hours, stand out there and get people. No. Thank you. How are you working around that? You got a more important attorney, uh, appointment, so.
It was, it was actually, cause you get to know those kids.
He took them off with them.
Yeah.
It was actually.
Yeah. You just like your car. Oh, did you? Well, you can do that too, parking slips. So, eight o'clock, it was eight morning. I'll be there, I wanna have donuts, sorry. I bring my own coffee.
They don't get the fresh ones, they don't get.
Man, don't wonder if you're having a hard time. Maybe we better move to the basements and start again. Everybody down there visiting you at that point, like, hey, how are you doing? Oh, yeah. Should've seen you today, we did.
Yes, as I said, yes.
You got your bags packed to move to circle drive?
So, I'm, I'm not packing those bags yet.
Yeah. It's not my idea, I don't know how you fess in that, that pilot.
Uh, that first floor.
Yeah. I, I don't know anything more about Smackus than I did. I have no financials.
They talked about it several, uh, meetings.
I think. What?
Remember he had his TCU in there and he had all the three interns.
No, I, uh, I have a history of embezzlement. So I'm, I'm a nerd.
You know what, though? Barron County has a history of. You sat out in Barron County, you were the commissioner.
What's the other one that's been talking? Who in the, who in the county embezzled any of that?
The sheriff's department had many officers that embezzled money. I spent twenty-seven years there, I investigated.
Oh, well, I'm.
But I'm saying they're all part of the, uh, experience.
Oh, okay. So that's an investigation.
Animal control had investment money problems. The mouting bird had investment problems.
I'm literally literally.
So, any government agency, if you go back, is gonna have some kind of investment, that's because they're a free zone. So we learn from our mistakes, I'm saying that the sheriff's department is a lot better department because of mistakes. Uh, the commission at the Barron, at Barron County is a lot better than it was before. It doesn't mean that they were bad, it just means we learned things, so.
Well, I haven't heard Smackus, I've said, these are our costs. Five years back and they've gone up this much and therefore this is just a project. It's not, they haven't gone through that with this, or with the public.
Does it, does it cost you more to rent your house? Does it cost you more to drive your vehicle?
I expect there is, but I'd like to see the number. I'd like to see the number.
What number is it that you wanna see?
I wanna see their costs, uh, uh, personnel, their costs of, of, of ambulances, their costs of maintaining their place. I'm.
If you, if you saw on their website, they've got financials, they put that stuff out there.
Smackus, best? Well.
They don't try to find this, they, they have, you know, um, company financials or their audits or their, uh, budgets, they put their budget out there, their budgets as well.
This has been handled as though, uh, it's not a screw in our business. I don't like the way this has been handled.
Like, I know Brian has been here, I remember, started in June, July, he's been here hot and hot.
I didn't, most meetings, I don't remember ever.
He was here last year.
Well, I, I, I missed that meeting.
Just before that and, 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 and June, when I had his recent shift.
But I didn't get any answers from anybody there. Did they answer my question? Oh, they didn't. Not just me, it's my son-in-law. Uh, who's concerned about me, this is the last meeting. And we've really had problems. I mean, basically, with, you're talking about deputy sheriffs that embezzle money, that's a whole different thing. I'm talking about the guy who runs the thing, who, who, uh, forged the independent accountant statement. And went to jail, he's running.
He's, he's in, kind of there, he went to jail.
Well, I know, you'll see about it.
Director.
Well?
Now they have a new director, he's not there anymore. That person went to jail, they got fired. Because the system worked and then, you know, they get audits, so the audit system works. So a lot of things were put in place after that.
Yeah.
So, it's a much better place than it was in that building, so as, as we think people, we can't feel them doing bad things. Oh, we try to correct them so we don't put them.
I don't know, they, they always try that.
So you're part of it.
Yes, ma'am. I remember your face.
I live close to you.
Yes.
Good. I love it.
Yes! How are you?
And you're still at the corner.
Yeah, I'm still there, still there with the little.
I never seen you, I've been working up.
Yeah, I get, well, yeah, cause I'm down.
You're at the. You're chasing prams.
Yeah, yeah, I have to. So, or am I out teaching or something?
But I never see why. Yeah, your work does.
Yeah, I, yeah, I do, uh, just because I'm so, I'm so. When I used to go out there, I used to, um, wish things, and then after a while, I was like, I just gotta grow. But yeah, but yeah, my, I have worse dreams than you.
You do?
You give me a plant, it'll be dead in a few days.
He looks flexible.
Oh.
But I never see him doing it.
Oh, what?
Well, like, motor in the lot or whatever.
Oh. Well, not necessarily, you can hire somebody else to do it. Yeah, you know, I think it's not.
Yeah, so I hire, hire.
Well, that's good, I mean, you save money. That's cheaper than paying for it.
Oh, Larry's the one.
Yeah, so he does, so I, I actually, I don't know, he's in my shit.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, how, how is this, you go for months, years and years at twenty, twenty dollars and all of a sudden you're at fifty dollars?
That's because everything is bought.
Yeah, but how, how all of a sudden, all of a sudden, you're gonna have fifty dollars and last year you had twenty dollars.
So, Gracie, Gracie, this is Fox's dad, remember how I bring Fox to you all the time?
Yes, I said I know that, yes.
I say she doesn't see me, and I'm like, you don't see me walking a little Foxy route, or actually. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I'll, I'll find them on me to pay the fifty dollars, but I'm, I'm, I'm still not convinced it's necessary. I have, they have not made their case with me.
Hey, that's fair enough, that's fair enough, I like that saying, well, they made their case with you, that's fair enough. So, I get that.
Yeah, well.
I get that, so.
Well, I, I, you know, when I test everyone, so, my insurance pays.
Well, see, that's, it's complicated, insurance pays part of it and this other pays part of it. And I wanna, I wanna sure, be sure we're not taken for a ride on this other part.
Well, I think they're trying to.
What?
I think they're trying to operate, uh, hoping to look our way.
Oh, well, good baby.
And most of all, probably uses.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, that's my herd right there, buddy. I do, but please, I didn't picture these like one, this is nice, you know, that, yeah, that's his. So anyway, sorry if you were, had so, well, your feelings. You make so much, like, to these all steer happening. I had the twin, so I'm like, yeah. Yeah, that's right, I was saying, that's right. I said, okay, this baby Ray. Sorry, got the flowers, now we're deep enough. That's the only way to go with that one. That's it? That's it. She's a little different beast. Awesome. Yeah. Marson.
I'm so well. Where do you live?
I live out west of the canyon. Yeah. September, fourteen. Okay. See, if you're in the sixties, you remember, so, yeah. It's gonna be, it's that one. Oh, I know, I hope Kathy, she knows both, she hasn't lost her pulse. Cause Kathy likes singing something, hey, it's Oboe's birthday, okay, thanks. So she hasn't turned her tree, so.
Yeah, I throw me out tomorrow. Every year.
Well, I'm.
Yeah. Yeah. So, like, it's totally different.
I will walk across the street. I ain't driving, I'm walking. You know, he's gonna be that close.
I paid for her. So.
I've met him.
His wife is working. Oh, Mike. My houses are Maker's.
Okay. It's, you can't tell you.
Yeah.
Because I don't know. Right on the map, right, it's my house. Yeah, but yes.
Yep.
I don't know where. Yeah, yeah, I said.
I think with base, you must have more store. Like, I put. I just speak seriously, all dependents. No, no, it's, oh, I know. Same as you said it that much. Yeah. I don't know, nobody. I could, I could hear it. Make sense. You know, and her word on her eyes.
Did you hear any of those city commissioners say to me, well, if you're concerned about the financials, you can find them on the web? They, they're not, they're not being open. Yeah, I will, whether it's coming, Smack us or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can go to that and you'll find it, so, look for that.
Yeah, well, that.
Hanging out, personally.
Yeah. Oh, sure.
Yeah. And I know that's all you're looking for, is answers to, or some say.
But these are where they should come and ask for a raise. They should come forward with their financials and say, this is what we spent this year, this year, this year, this is how our costs have gone up. We got none of that. They have given us no justification, huh? There's no justification for this, that they have given us. And that's, that's wrong.
So, I, I, I like how you. They haven't broken the day, so, you know.
Yeah, right. Everybody's always asking me for money, for a raise. I, I said, well, why do you want that? All I say, I'm, I'm living grizzled from two to five, that's the reason, that's why I want it, I'm just like. Well, that, that doesn't change a lot.
You should look into that.
Well, I'll talk to my son-in-law about this. He's concerned.
She'll, she'll, she'll be there.
I don't wanna give them five instead of two, and then have them come forth and say, well, they, it's, somebody stole the money, or it's gone down the drain, and they don't have enough yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, that was a crime in Canada, is it increased or decreased, or stay at about the same level?
It's about the same level. She keeps a good tab. She keeps it down. That's what I'm hearing, holding it down.
Good, yeah. Yes.
We can guarantee every word you'll show. Yeah. That will see you several years. You have to sign up. You don't know how we're gonna do that.
Yes.
So get the number. No, but, you know, they have to sign.
Now, we're very fortunate.
They have a number, they have a final number.
Yeah. And the support of this is. It's something that we're very. So we dropped them off that car.
Everybody showed up.
Well, we appreciate what you do, protect us against it.
Women, they work really hard to go out there and do the right thing.
Yeah. You know, as I mentioned, nobody congratulates you for telling, telling them that they broke the rule. They don't say, thank you for telling me that I, I exceeded the speed limit.
Nobody likes them bad.
Oh, we got some silly speed limit. Like, you got four-lane road going north, twenty-five miles an hour. That's, that's been a speed trap for years, and it's not been good for Canada. I mean, people get on a four-lane road, twenty, twenty-five miles an hour.
Yeah, cause it's still a residential area as it goes through there, as you're not allowed to travel. Same way off through the tracks or on the north. You know, it's still a residential area that we still have to go twenty-five in.
Yeah.
Compared to where I grew up.
Yeah. Oh, years ago. Buckley was talking about this, the setting speed limits in a straight place. Setting what, no, my people drive. And, but he said, oh, no, that's, that, I don't, I'm not gonna go over that. You really should set them that way.
The Michigan Department of Transportation has a whole wave of surveys and, and speed limit formulas on how to set speed limits.
Yeah, right.
It's not the state that goes out, so that should be twenty-five, or that should be thirty. It goes by, you know, you've been here and say, yes.
And we're way below Canada.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, you got that four-lane road out there, twenty-five miles an hour, that's ridiculous.
Keeps everybody safe.
Well, I.
I'm gonna tell you, it keeps everybody safe, I'd rather them be twenty-five, unless they do twenty-five, they're probably going thirty, thirty-five.
Well, I, yeah, I'm in town here, I know, I just like how street lives, so I never know where twenty-five. But I knew these people, they have a place, it was the river, the president here is.
Sure.
And they picked up my doctor, driving through town, how's he to know that we have these silly speed limits?
We got speed limit signs that says twenty-four.
I don't know, I, I, I don't remember seeing those speed limit signs out there.
Forty-five before lunch.
Well, I, I wasn't too happy, though, that the city manager was poo-pooing this other way of setting, this rational way of setting speed limits.
And said Heather or Bill?
Buckley.
Oh, that guy. Yeah, you know, things are done a little different sometimes.
Yeah, no, yeah.
And, you know, I, I can't say that sometimes, I mean, I can say anything, but I turn in front of that road, because we literally support reasonable speed limits for traffic people. Revenue for the city.
Yeah, right.
I'm not saying we can't, but I'm saying for others, if you use everybody that did that. That's why they have this whole new system that we get, putting that, uh, speaking of. We'll, we'll not do it again, we don't, we don't, so we can do that. Clay did that today. For Clay, they, they had, they had. He knew where it was, let me correct, he knew where it was, and he had to pick it out, it cost me a bag of ours. So he gonna get it out, you know, sorry. I drove from Wednesday.
Yo, I grew up in East Canton, which is on Route Thirty. Still is, they have a bypass, but yeah, you come in East Canton from this, last. You come in the traffic light, you have to turn, turn right, then you turn left, and you have a truck through the town. Well, I, I think, they, they didn't speak. The, the mayor was always available. To wait.
Well, that's it, you know, back then, you know, some of those small communities, and then. You wouldn't do the, 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 you're right, couldn't judge, you know, who was riding the sheriff or the mayor.
Yeah, the mayor, well, you had a mayor's court, yeah. Up in the second floor of this, it was on the first floor of the city hall, on the village hall. Second floor, we used to have the Boy Scout beatings, right, and, and do, um, caveman football up there. Well, one night we were doing caveman football, and they were having a village council beating downstairs. They sent somebody up, told us to lay off, because they couldn't hear what they were doing. Yeah. Well, you know, during World War Two, there was a thirty-five mile speed limit, everything. I, you know, there are not many of us around who remember that.
You remember when they changed the speed limit to fifty-five?
I can't do that.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was Nixon, that was the state gas, yeah. Yeah, Nixon, yeah, this firelight in a chauffeur, living car, but police all the time, he's setting the speed limit.
Said across the United States, fifty-five was the max.
Yeah, I remember that.
That actually lasted for a couple of years, and then, you know. Well, when he got out of office, someone else moved in, and said, no, whatever, sixty-five, seventy, whatever happened to that? It's eighty at that.
Yeah.
Well, you know, seventy-five up toward Lexington, you get to a certain strip, and it's seventy-five, so if it's seventy-five, you know you're doing eighty-five.
Well, you really won't be driving about the speed the other car.
Sure, you gotta keep up with traffic.
Yeah.
I hear that all the time, just keeping up with traffic, yeah.
Be reliable, somebody that.
In Chicago, man, you're really funny. Just been in Chicago. You need to get far right, or, man, you get out there, you better just go.
Yeah.
Yep, you just.
Oh, you're so sweet.
I used to drive to, um, to my mother's place in East Canton, family. But there was a place through Akron we go through, they changed the speed limit about every five miles. And so everybody had to slow down, and it, it was dangerous, really. I mean, um. Around that, you got a whole bunch of people, right, driving over sixty, to go down to fifty or something like that. Pretty dumb. But really fun.
I tell you, there's a strip of roads that you really gotta watch, and that's thirty-one, as you're going through Indiana, oh my goodness, there it is. Unfortunate out there, unbelievable, all the time, just. Go down thirty-one, you know where I'm talking about, like going down.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah, I, well, my wife's in Culver's.
Oh, okay.
I have two daughters, I would call her, so.
Yeah.
Drive down, we drove down to Culver a lot.
Yeah. So, at thirty-one, you may, you can't speed up at thirty.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I remember on Blackberry Day, when I was driving up from Culver in my Monka T four. And you know, those just, those are thirty-five.
Yeah.
And so, but I was doing fine, I'd see the cops stop all these cars going off, and they didn't, first, they didn't stop me, I wasn't going over at speed limit.
No, your plate was on there, just, it was on the one they amended this morning, like, the one I got online today was not, it didn't have it, but if you got the one right there, it should say it. This one, resource officer? No, they, they cabled that, but I thought yours was better than me said.
Yeah, yours was.
He's the one that's today, yeah, but that's why I did print mine out. Yeah, so, I mean, congratulations. I see you at the next meet. Clear that up.
Yeah, we did, we did.
Make sure that bar, maybe, it's me, or who.
Is that was the last Wednesday of the month, right?
Well, she's in charge of it.
Is she it?
Cool.
She don't know it yet, but she is.
I was supposed to have gone to the last meeting.
Yeah, she go knock at your door, and I'm in a, hey, we're in the inch.
I would love to see the.
Representing the North style. They really put me like.
Speaking of that, they go.
Oh, hey, my brother, we haven't had a meeting since, since when we had.
Yeah, I think.
It's on our plans and all that.
Yeah, it was not enough for.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, but I thought that was kind of moving forward, and then had a very. I think it's done deal, just. Two days before he's already. Okay.
I've always wanted to run, but I didn't think I could do it.
Really?
Nice, nice. I don't know, all of a sudden, something, someone told me he was running, and I just got.
We get that up here, and I get a nice location for National Night Out. Well, there's no hill, you gotta sit on it, build a hill. Have to build a hill, you, you, we had to build a lot, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, you have to do that, yes.
But that's.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah. That basketball court was just loaded yesterday.
Oh, was it?
And they were parked all up there on the court on the grass. So I was kind of like about that.
Yeah.
You know, we need to sign up somewhere.
Yeah, so. Back in the day, you never could find any word.
Yeah, you couldn't.
And then they moved the signs, so I think what we need to do is put signage up there, so you can probably get some one side.
Yeah, yeah.
Wake from the basketball.
They were parked all up on the grass and whatnot, you. And then he said, guys, kind of. Yes. Not using the trash cans, you know, they just do the trash.
But if.
That was really bad.
Well, some have to work stronger.
Yeah.
Yes, something.
I thought that was up there, they weren't begging them, but they said.
No, they didn't. Took them to show, they were, one of them was birthed in a state or two, and the other one was born in a major.
But they couldn't.
Yeah.
It must have been any good, that's why. Trash cans, right? Yeah. Soon as you go.
Yeah. But yeah, it was, it was.
I think they were like.
Look like they were the age of maybe.
It's good.
I was completely glad when I saw that.
Actually ended up in a, fair, I didn't want them. Well, if you see that, just someone left one at the air, the time of pretending they were.
What was just.
What are we gonna do with it, I said, why, my pen is still ready for some day. Might as well slide up there, I'll take it down.
Wendy has a whole goal, she said, hey, we have a slot.
So, we need to, we need to go and drop off a little farm. They went, they went, they were delivering some tickets to our farmers. That's gonna buy it. Hershey's more comfortable, bring it back, that's a little cool. Hershey's bring that, you know, the cooling. Hershey's bring that, you know, the cooling, you know, so, yeah. Tim, where do we put the radar trail? Right near, so, I had a call for it on Front Street today.
Did you?
Really?
Who?
Jerry Downly called me, and said they're gonna race it down Front Street, he wants it at the photo shop, or he wants it down, yeah, sure. He said, all right, done, let's do it.
When we get done with this, this is a survey we have to do for the downtown streetscape. So, we have to do Sunday days there, and then we move it right down there.
Okay.
And then I put it right about school times.
Yeah.
So, that'd be good.
Okay, all right.
Are you gonna put in diagonal parking? Get more parking?
Thirty-six thousand, right? But if there is enough room, I don't think, when we it's laid out, that there's gonna be enough room, right? You got, you know, you got to kind of, you give up parking spots on one side, or give up, oh, we had a sidewalk.
Well, must have been a long time ago, when Tammy was, sort of, manager there, Tammy. He changed, Alliance, Nebraska, put it on a different angle. You don't necessarily have to have that angle, you have a bad angle.
Right.
And then, that widens the street, but when I came to town there, nineteen fifty-seven, it was all diagonal.
It wasn't, really, yeah.
The problem with that was, you had, it had a lot of choices, people backing up.
Yeah.
But these things, now that you have a, a TV in the garden. You can, uh, back out of a diagonal spot.
Yeah, I didn't know it, I saw that, I, I, parking down there. So you'd have to back the horse buggy up, back then?
Well, I don't go that far. My parents, well, my father was born in eighteen eighty-six.
Oh, my goodness, yeah, so he probably did a little horse buggy.
Oh, yeah. You know, he remember, he was living in.
You're living in Pittsburgh, okay.
And he remembered, the first car he showed was at Knox, at the Heinz.
Oh, really?
Yeah, right, yeah. And I think they still have that, and a few years ago, it's that they have in their museum, that. Yeah, that's a, it was a Weyerbus Knox airplane car.
Uh-huh.
I do every day, though.
Well, he, he remember reading in the paper about, said these two guys had flown an airplane. Kitty Hawk to Carolina, nineteen, it was not in the paper, yeah.
You know, the things he saw, the things you have seen in your lifetime, the changes. You know, this Buchanan's made, and, and, or, you know, when you think about what it was like when you were born, and. You don't have to remember it compared to the day, it's just, it'd be just such a change. The things you've seen, you think, people laying on the moon, walking on the moon, you know, those kinds of things, it's kind of a, it's a. I was having this conversation with you about our, our generation, and what we've seen, and what we.
Yeah, right, that's right.
So, I sold it, yeah, you were talking about. So, things that, even, like I said, our generation has seen, has been. Yeah, that was a person that was. I don't have big support for it. I remember back in nineteen eighty, we had that, and then we got, yeah, that was always our job, we go. Yeah, I'm sitting there, go turn the channel, then once he had it on the channel, that was it, you know, I did sixteen or twenty-two, whatever, it wasn't. I could never, I could never stay up there. No, that's healthy.
We used to have supper on Saturday night, we'd last, listen to Jack Benny and, wow, and some other things on the radio.
On the radio, yeah.
Yeah, my kids, you know, sitting there looking at the radios, it wasn't so bad, as a matter of fact, you use your own imagination.
Sure.
Uh, and maybe they look better than they do, they're really people, dude.
You'd be disappointed if you really saw.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
That's neat, that's cool. I went from that, you know, the radios, TVs, now look at, oh my goodness, what do we got here, you know, this is a computer.
Oh, yeah.
Phone and all that, yeah. But he wasn't listening at the K line, um, he had the radio on, watching the TV.
Yeah.
What is this, man, this is the radio, why?
Don't you listen to the K lines?
Yeah, and, uh.
George Cal, yeah.
And all the announcers, but he wanted to listen to, um, um. Ah, man, the voice of Tiger B's, yeah, wherever he was, he like, just like, wanted to hear him. He'd do as well as, uh, the guy at the TV, he'd do much better, probably he's at the stadium, or, yeah. Ernie Hurley.
Yeah, it's just a race, though. Here's the K line, there.
No, we're not gonna have broadcasters like that in the whole world, no, those are some.
I'm the windup.
Yep, you don't, you don't have that now. Oh, why, why? It just said that you were like, why, you know, listening to the radio, bashing and all this stuff, like, come on.
Yeah. Well, when I was growing up, first there was no TV, but you'd go in this, in the service station, and they have a radio. Uh, over, or they were working, and you'd listen to it, Jack Green, he recorded for the Cleveland Indians. Yeah, and he would say, here's the windup, here's the set, strike two, and so on, home run. Well, I remember visiting with Don Pierce, and he was, well, you know, of course, Don Pierce has been on quite a while. But he was, he was our state representative, and he's Speaker of the House.
Yeah.
I went and visited with him one afternoon, it must have been, you know, like, in the seventies, or maybe the eighties. And there he was, sitting in the living room, on a couch, with a radio, there's the radio, listening to the baseball game.
Sure.
I think he was reading something, but he was listening to it, yeah.
No, seriously, I have to think of a picture I can read. Oh, come on.
Well, the movie's, he was a high school coach.
Here he comes.
Bleach a creature, yeah.
During, maybe in the twenties or thirties, and he went to a course at Oakdale with New Brockney.
Is that right?
About, yeah, football coach. Well, you're gonna enjoy spending your fifty dollars.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to reenter open session?
I'm looking to reenter open session.
Thank you, is there support?
There's money, I'll support.
For the proposal, please.
Downey?
Yes.
Buddy?
Yes.
Swann?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Let's consider, uh, action pursuant to closed session discussions.
So I'm going to authorize City Manager to take action pursuant to discussions held in closed sessions.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, your proposal, please.
Buddy?
Yes.
Swann?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Reedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Harris.
Okay, moving on to item fourteen, communications.
So as we heard, um, earlier during the public comments of her agenda items, Mr. Van Dyke is presenting a sponsorship opportunity for the Twenty Twenty-Three Nicest Place in America Tour. In the packets that were available to the Commissioner and the public, there are different sponsorship level opportunities. Um, requesting anywhere from a hundred to up to five thousand dollars for various sponsorships. Um, there are marketing opportunities available to the City of Buchanan as part of that, and so that is what's being proposed, um, to the Commission today, to either act upon or pass.
Can I ask, um. I'm gonna ask Richie's kind of our marketing guy to, um, your thoughts on, uh, the marketing opportunities, can I just?
You know, he, well, first of all, he brought us to the national stage of this nomination, fourteen hundred times we're nominated. We won, it's given us a huge push, I think, from inside the community, and outside of the community, seeing, looking at us from outside, and it's the type of branding that you can't, you know, it's, it's unique. You got a real Buchananite musician hitting the road, and bringing this message to all these places in the state. I mean, I think it's a great opportunity for us, it's, it's a, for him to continue to tell the story. You get into the quantifying of it, you know, I mean, um, he lists options that are kind of interesting. Of what you will get in return, I'm sure that, I, I could see it as a beginning of a partnership. And I, maybe there's other, um, potential sponsors in the community that could help him, I could reach out to them, and the city's not alone, but I, I was just thinking of tonight, there's a handful of other sponsors, uh, potential sponsors that might kick in, so I think we get our money back. Uh, I think he's already given us a lot more than he's asking for, and, uh, you know, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
I think there's, there's some value in it, um, all the levels are within your purgals, so at that, I'd, other comments, I'd motion to authorize payment at the discretion of the City Manager.
There's support for that?
This, this money, I support that.
Will it work, please?
Swann?
Yes.
Edison?
Yes.
Reedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Buddy?
Yes.
Harris.
Excellent.
Thank you. Okay, public comment, not agenda items, anyone wishing to make a public comment?
Oh, yes, I do.
This is gonna be new, because in a different period, that arrived at Channel Seventeen, it's interesting.
Channel Seventeen was first, I went to the landfill meeting, I need to have a meeting with you. And Tyler from the landfill, and also would come get us, to see how we can do this, what equipment they need out there. And if Tyler is here, he can ask questions of you and them to have out there. My goal, I'll tell you, is to have every meeting, planning, DPW, um, everything out there.
Okay, so you're saying record their meeting and put it on here, as opposed to, I thought you were initially stating, like, have their own channel out there, but.
No, but they have to be in here, so we can talk, so they understand what they're getting.
So you'd like to have every, every meeting on Channel Seventeen? I, I mean, I think you mentioned that to me last time you, yeah, no.
And next, Ross Sanders, is that cleaned up, are the books gone? Is upstairs cleaned up, is that, it's.
It's in progress right now.
I've heard that for.
Right, I have not, but that's.
My, my wife was in there last week, helping to start cleaning the books out, and figure out where all the books are going, so, so it's, it's in progress.
Virginia's out of there.
It's gonna have to be cleaned, and that handrail coming off the front is an accident waiting to happen. So there's gotta be work done before, you know, so you're going to get anything, and it's about to get started.
So, Norma, before you lined a meeting up with Tyler and Heather, so the landfill, the way the other board members put it that day, they were looking for you to meet with the other municipalities first. That way, because the landfill is owned by all of us, right, all five municipalities, right?
And I.
So before we start tackling, uh, Channel Seventeen for the landfill specifically, we wanna make sure that all the municipals are on board with funding that, and that way the City of Buchanan isn't the only one burdening that cost. So meeting with Hershul, with Davey, with those guys. Get, get the Nows ones first, because they, they got the biggest pocketbooks to do.
I can.
Start with them before we tackle on Heather here, and if we can get the buy-in from all of them, we'll find a way to work.
Know something, so if I talk, I can tell them something.
Oh, in terms of how much we're spending for it?
Yes.
That's a fair question, okay.
And how it's going to work, I have been told, a DVD can be brought here, and it can be worked, but I don't see anything over there to help me. I would also like to have someone from the school, like we have at the senior center, where when the students come in and help us by telling us how we can use a phone and iPad, they could do that for us too, I have a to vote, there we have. Okay, we've got one more, Third Street, when we're gonna get it? It's getting later here, we're gonna go through, um, asphalt again, we're gonna go through all of this stuff with a contractor, I'd like to talk to them.
Yep, I have, uh, multiple conversations today with Scott Riley himself, uh, collaborating with Michael Schwartz from Prina New Hall. They are gonna meet together, um, to review the site within a week.
Within a week? Next.
That, that doesn't mean that the construction will start that day, but they, they will be meeting to review it together, and Scott's last prediction, which was just earlier today, was within a week and a half, whenever they finish in Buffalo, but he believes it'll be within a week and a half.
I've heard that.
I, I would do that.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, I just wanted to officially introduce myself to those who don't know me, as Patricia Robinson, the Superintendent of Buchanan Community Schools, so I will be the president for you to speak with regarding schools, and I do know we've been in the, in the building, so last week Mrs. Edison was in there, and we're working on getting those books out of there, so.
Thank you very much.
It's gonna be a project, though, so we'll work out as hard as we can, and just wanted to say thank you, and I'm, this is my first commission meeting, so, um, I'm excited about that, and then also about the possibilities and partnerships that we'll have with, with you guys in the future, so that's it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
I have a quick question. From Prolema, one A teacher, Mark Cartwright.
Speaking of PR, who's doing those videos, don't you guys put on Facebook?
So, Rich works with a videographer named Dan, who's fabulous, he's really wonderful.
Wow, great job, absolutely.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Okay, let's move on to executive comments, City Manager comments.
So we've had a lot going on in the past several weeks, we had a election, we had National Night Out, we have Thrill on the Hill. We're in the midst of a audit right now, so that's our biggest focus internally here at City Hall at the moment, now that we've come out of the sort of craziness of the election, though, obviously we have a November general not too far around the corner, so, yeah. Poor Callis' work is, begins as soon as it finishes with the other there. Um, as we continue to move into the election season, I want to strongly encourage our, um, people residing in the City of Buchanan and surrounding areas, to please go out and vote, it doesn't matter who you're voting for. Um, turnout was not as good as we were hoping for this last, uh, even though it was a primary, so we would really like to see a great turnout for the November election, so I strongly encourage you to remind everyone you know, as election season gets closer, to go out and make their voice heard in our democracy, it's our function. I also want to applaud, um, everyone in the community for participating continually in things like Thrill on the Hill and National Night Out. A lot of it is done by staff, but it doesn't matter how much effort the staff puts into it, if the community doesn't show up, and our community shows up and supports, and shows their love for what we're doing for the community, so thank you for doing that, and I'm hoping very shortly to have some commentary for you guys in relation to our financials, once the audit finalizes very soon here. And I'm hoping very shortly to have some commentary for you guys in relation to our financials, once the audit finalizes very soon here. So we'll have a session where our firm that we utilized in the past year, Krugel Lawton, will be coming in and doing a full budgetary presentation and wrap up of our yearly financials, so we'll look forward to that fairly shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Money?
Well, yeah, I just want to thank everybody who participated tonight in the, uh, the SMACAS discussion, I know it's a, you know, one of those controversial subjects that, uh, that we all hate to approach, and I know this commission, you know, we have to make those decisions. Um, I'm hoping that the community, uh, looks at it in our favor and, you know, what we did here tonight. Um, had the opportunity to go to the Barrett County Youth Fair this past week. Uh, once again, kudos to Buchanan Police Department for the little production they put on down there. Uh, they had their dump tank on just right close to the midway, uh, along with several other communities that had their police departments there. And I really have to say that, you know, the Buchanan Police Department did an outstanding job with all the people that they attracted. Of course, it was a dump tank, you know, and you got to throw big rocks at a cop, you know, and come and get them in the water. But, uh, Chief Burdette, um, and Bree were in the dump tank, and I, like I said, they had people lined up around the block, you know, and running down to get corn dogs and come back and stand in line eating corn dog, just to dump these guys, so. You know, and, uh, it, it's just really a pleasure to go down there and see Buchanan Police Department and Buchanan itself. You know, being represented in such a great way, uh, by the other, uh, by the other, uh, communities in the, in the, uh, in the area. And like I said, all of those other little cop shops that they had there, they were always standing around waiting to get a softball to throw at her. It's just great, and like I said, thanks for everybody who stuck around for, you know, all of this, so that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Gary.
Okay.
Christopher Swann?
A little bit of echo on what Larry said, I hope everyone understands the amount of effort that went into evaluating SMACAS and the questions, and yeah, no one wants to pay more, but it's a necessary service. Hope everyone respects our decision, uh, yeah, there are some tough questions that SMACAS needs to answer too, and they need to sharpen their pencil in a year, and now they know what that runway looks like for what we're expecting, and hopefully they execute in a year so we can have a good discussion and the public's informed as they should, so that's all.
Okay.
You're good?
Yeah.
Uh, I was gonna talk about SMACAS, you guys already did. Um, I guess my only comment this evening is a reminder that this Thursday, I'm going to be over at Lehman's at seven o'clock, um, having a discussion, hopefully with people who show up. The city manager has agreed to join me, um, it's just an informal back and forth with the public, answering questions. Um, I'm amazed at how, and I should, I should just stay off of Facebook, I really should. But there are so many uninformed or misinformed people on Facebook, it's not even funny. I mean, they're arguing about things that don't even exist, they're just not even true, they're not real, and it amazes me. And so, um, I came up with the idea of just having these informal meet the major nights where people could show up and ask questions, and we could have a, a very laid back, back and forth. Um, so hopefully, tell your friends or come yourself, we'll have a pint at Lehman's. Um, with that.
I'll echo from the audience.
With that, I would take the motion to.
I vote to.
Is there.
I'll support it.
Edison?
Yeah.
Reedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Yes. So, just so you know, there was a, there's a cadence to this, and our chairman has decided to jump in.
Done.
Yeah.